We could call a meeting to order and have the clerk lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening, everyone. There's a wild volleyball match going on in the gym between Fairport and Penfield. Maybe we'll get a chance to see some of it, but Penfield won the first game and was tied in the second, so. Big crowd, though. Nice to see. If I could have a motion at the, in a second that the agenda of the September 20th, 2016, be approved as submitted.
Some will.
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. If I could have a motion a second that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as listed on your program.
So moved.
Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you. We don't have any special reports at this point. This is visitor speaking time, in which time is provided on the agenda for residents to bring concerns and comments to the Board. Comments obviously should not be related to any particular individual or to the specifics of negotiation, since it's not proper for the Board to discuss these issues in public session. Request to speak comment form was in the back of the room, and if you were going to talk, you should have given that to our clerk at this point. Was anything turned in? Okay, we don't have any speakers. All right. So, our student representative, Charlotte Nazarian.
So, now that school is underway, there's a little bit more information for me to give you guys. So I'll start with Harris Hill, and they are launching their performance of Peter Pan. The last auditions are tomorrow, so that should be really cool. I know they did a play last year, and I was able to go, and it was quite cool. And this past weekend, they were able to raise over $13,000 for their new playground for the PTA auction fundraiser. And I know as someone who played on the current playground when they were at Harris Hill, it's gonna be really cool to see a new playground there for lots of kids to make new memories. Cobble's, the new principal, has been making his rounds, and I think the kids really, really like him. And the Character Bear has made an appearance and is teaching kids about Cobble's character traits, and they're being very receptive towards that. Indian Landing held their back-to-school bash, and there was petting zoo and ice cream, and really looked like the kids had a great time. There were pictures up on the Facebook page and Twitter, and, I mean, I would've wanted to go. So, I mean, it looked like a lot of fun. And Scribner has made a lot of use of the playground and the good weather, and have, their principal seems to be an avid Bills fan, and showing the Scribner's Bills pride, along with a lot of other elementary schools have been posting pictures of their kids in Bills gear. Bay Trail, they launched their 50th Washington DC trip meeting. So as someone who went on the Washington DC trip, and, you know, my dad, my aunt, and my uncle all went, it's a really, really cool thing, and I'm excited that, you know, 50 years of kids have been able to have this opportunity, and I can't wait for 50 more years of kids to be able to do the same. And modified sports have just been kicked off, so I know the teams have just gotten enough practices to start competing this week. So their modified sports program have started. Over here at the high school, last, or yesterday, the, no, Sunday, the cross-country team volunteered at the Rochester Marathon and got a lot of shout-outs and letters from the runners. The boys soccer team won last night, and the girls tied at their most recent game. I would love to speculate that they would've won, but there was Mother Nature made an appearance, and there was Slender. The boys and girls volleyball teams are now ranked number one in the state for each of them, which is really, really cool. Last year, our boys suffered a hard loss to McQuade, and now have beaten, we have a meet, or a, I don't know, volleyball competition against them next week, and we are ranked ahead of them right now. So it's gonna be really cool if we can beat them, and now that we're ranked number one in the state, I think the boys really, and the girls, have a chance at winning the state tournament. There's lots of academic student recognition, which I'm sure Dr. Putnam will discuss in superintendent reports. Homecoming begins on Monday, and the Spirit Week has been announced at the high school. Carnival Flyers, I have one for each of you, are being handed out to the elementary schools as we speak, and the Saturday night football game will be played against Churchville. So that's set, and I think we have a chance at winning, because the football team was able to choose who they wanted to play against, and they chose Churchville. And student councils currently were planning our fourth quadrennial election night lock-in on November 8th. So I don't know if a lot of you were able to go to the last one in 2012. We're expecting over 200 seniors this year, along with student council members, and more information will be forthcoming. We don't know a lot yet, we're still working out logistics, but it's gonna look like a really good night. We've secured a couple of the school bands, and sounds like it's gonna be a lot of fun. So, that's a wrap.
Wow. Do you have time to do your homework at all?
Yeah.
Okay, good. Any questions for Charlotte? Great, great report, a lot of activity, and thank you for being so comprehensive in that and taking time to go to some of those as well. We appreciate it. Thanks. Dr. Putnam?
I don't know if I can follow that, but I will try. That was great. And for anybody viewing at home, this flyer went home via email to every parent K-12 in Penfield, so hopefully we get a lot of people coming out for homecoming and all the events. This evening, we have student and staff honors. We have Mr. Ed Tarkowski, who will be here to talk about Office 365 for students, and we also have just a very brief update on a facilities committee. Our district facilities committee met last night, and Dr. Sansucci will give a brief overview of what we talked about and what the Board and the community will hear more about at our next meeting. Lots of, lots of great student honors. National Merit semifinalists, six Penfield High School students have been named semifinalists in the 2017 National Merit Scholarship Competition. Lindsay Browning, John Burke, Kurt Dawson, Hannah Sepala, Maggie Straight, and Joy Chang were all National Merit semifinalists, which is very exciting for those students in Penfield. There is a picture of five of them, along with some of our counselors, building principal and administrator from the high school. There are also AP scholars were announced, the following Penfield High School seniors and 2016 graduates have been recognized as AP scholars for their outstanding results on AP exams last spring. So while these four students are no longer, current students or graduates, as we always say, once a patriot, always a patriot, so we want to make sure we honor the following students who earned an average score of at least four on all AP exams taken, and scores of four or higher on eight or more of these exams. And that would be Christopher Bosso, Alan Liu, Matt Morante, and Jennifer Sidon. There are some other AP scholar awards that come out. AP Scholar with Distinction Award, 48 Penfield students and graduates earned an average score of at least 3.5 on all AP exams, and scores of three or higher on five or more of those exams. There's also the AP Scholar with Honor Award, and that was given to 36 Penfield High School students and graduates earned an average score of at least 3.25 on all AP exams, and a score of three or higher on four or more of those exams. And then also the AP Scholar Award, 60 of our high school students and graduates completed three or more AP exams with scores of three or higher. All of these AP awards will come back again at the end of the school year for the honors convocation, where we celebrate our students' academic successes, 9th through 12th grade, and we review these. But just as a reminder, the AP grades don't come out until middle of the summer, so that's why the announcement is now for AP exams that took place last May. We have a wonderful partnership with the Urban Suburban Program, and every year, for the last three or four years, we've had an Urban Suburban Breakfast, and members of the organization of Urban Suburban come. We also have past graduates of Penfield High School who were members of the Urban Suburban Program. And on September 13th, we celebrated just a couple of fun pictures of our Urban Suburban Breakfast that takes place here at the high school hosted by Dr. Leslie Maloney. That is all I have for my updates, because Charlotte did an incredible job, so I'll invite Mr. Tarkowski up, who will walk us through Microsoft Office 365 for Students.
Thank you, Dr. Putnam. I appreciate it, and I appreciate the time to share a little bit about our latest initiative in technology, being Office 365 for Education. There's two components that make up Office 365, the whole education suite, the first one being the actual standalone Office 2016. It's the latest release of the full-blown Office version that gets installed on laptops and desktops, and that is, consists of all the standard feature, or all the standard modules that you'd normally see Word, Excel, PowerPoint. The other side, and they each complement one another, and the other side that we're gonna talk a little bit more about is the Office 365. Those are all cloud-based applications, they live up in the cloud, and what they actually are are light versions, if you will, of the full standalone version that would be installed on a desktop or a laptop. The standalone, the Office 2016, just is more feature-rich, it has more formatting, it has a lot more bells and whistles, if you will, than the cloud-based version does. But for the most part, you can accomplish what you need to by using the Office 365 version. It has some unique pieces to it, one is called Sway, and it's a different type of PowerPoint, it's a different way of experiencing PowerPoint, but it lives entirely online. There is also something called Forms, where you can create surveys, and there's another piece called Planner that exists solely online. So while they're similar, they both serve different functions, but yet are able to complement one another. The premise for going with Office 365 with a cloud-based program such as this is that the main thing is the access anywhere, anytime. And we've heard that over the years many, many times. I want to be able to access my documents from home. I want to be able to get my homework assignment and be able to work on it when I'm at home. And up until this point, we really haven't been able to do that in a safe, effective manner. With Office 365, we're going to be able to do that. It's a secure and private network that's built with Microsoft, it resides on Microsoft servers, in their data centers, which are very powerful, they have a lot of security and built around them, so we know where that data sits. The other thing that's important for us in education, the Office 365 is, as it says, FERPA, SIPA, and COPA compliant. And basically what those letters stand for, they're all different laws that help protect student information and student data that is out into the cloud-based environment. So Office 365 meets all the requirements of those particular federal laws, rules, regulations, whatever you want to call them. So we feel very confident in that it meets that. It's a closed environment, it's not shared, it's, it's built just for education. We have what they call our tenant, and it's built around Penfield, and what Penfield's needs are and how Penfield operates. So Microsoft has really took a very close look at it and built these tenants specifically for education, so it's a, it's a closed environment that we can see into. It also supports 21st century skills, which we feel is very important for students, more and more, this is gonna be their, it is the world. It's where everything's done in the cloud, or most everything, whether we, is done in the cloud. So this gives our students an opportunity to begin to experience that now as they head off to college. They're going to see this, whatever the main, whatever the provider is, they're going to see these applications, or some applications similar to these, once they get out into, not only into higher education if they decide to choose that path, but also in the world of work. So we know that these modules do support that. The other thing that's, that I want to point out is that the data is encrypted. It's encrypted in two ways, what we call in transit and at rest. So there's a secure pipeline, if you will, between our desktops and where the data resides on the Microsoft servers. And then at rest is where the data sits when you're not, when you're just storing a file or a document. That data is encrypted on the Microsoft servers, so that should anything happen, it is still encrypted at that point. The other nice thing is that this works with any device, and we've tried them all. It'll be on Mac, PC, handhelds, iPhone, iOS, iPad. There's a, there's an app in the Microsoft family that will work on those devices, Android, you name it, it's out there, it works. So it gives a lot of flexibility. You know, I even find myself, I do more and more Word document on my phone now, which I would never have admitted to, but I do that. It's very handy, and it's very nice to pull something up when you need it, because it's right there. So initially, we're looking at grades four through 12. It just seems to be this, where people are kind of landing, because we're always looking at what our colleagues are doing in the field, what we're reading, and where people are going. And four to 12 seems to be a great place to start, so that's our initial round. We're going to release this in grades four to 12, and we hope to release this and make it available to students a little bit later, this year, this fall, actually. We're really close to going, we have a few decision points just to work out yet. It is a dynamic platform, it changes, it seems like I open it up every day and there's something new there, or something changes just a little bit, so we want to make sure that we're working our way and being conscious as we work our way through being able to offer that. So what does it mean? It means that students, the staff already have this, but what it means is students, grades four through 12, will have access to email, it'll be controlled access, meaning that some students will be able to email outside the district, other students will only be able to email within the district, and where those are in discussions what those drop-off points are. So a student will be able to email another student, a student will be able to email a teacher, but they won't be able to email outside of the district, and we're looking at where those cutoffs are going to be. The one nice thing is that everybody gets one terabyte of storage. That's a lot of storage. They can put, and they can access that from everywhere. I mean, we have flash drives, I hope flash drives go away, because they break, they fail, we find them laying on the floor, they bring viruses in, I'd love to see those just disappear, because this is safe, secure, and it's a lot of space. I've purchased many flash drives myself, I've never filled one up, and those are like eight megabytes or eight gigs, and I've never filled these up. So one terabyte provides an awful lot of storage for everybody. Students are gonna have a class notebook where they can organize, think of it as just the binder in electronic format, they'll be able to organize all of their lessons if they choose to, again, this is voluntary, but if they choose to, they can organize their lessons, their assignments, their to-do lists, all in electronic format, and have it available, again, anywhere. As I said a little bit earlier, it'll be available in Mac and PC versions, iOS, Android versions for home use. The nice part is every student and their family will have access to five free copies of the Office 2016 suite that they can download and install on their home computers, again, Mac or PC, and that will remain active and actively updated until the student leaves Penfield School District. In addition to the five free copies that are installable on a Mac or a PC, they get five copies that they can install on a smartphone, a tablet, they treat them differently, so then they can access all the mobile copies on five other devices. And we also are looking forward to this, we're already seeing it, there's some of us have been working with it, where it enhances collaboration. We don't, I don't think I've emailed or sent anybody a paper copy in quite some time, everything is done electronically. Now, we share papers when we're working on them, you can actually work on, we've had multiple, six, seven people work on the same document at the same time, and make changes and work and collaborate together and be at different locations, so it's been very handy, and we're looking forward to the kids to be able to do the same type of thing. This first year is, we're kind of calling it a pilot, if you will. It's, again, voluntary for everybody, staff, students. We're finding our way. This first year, we're becoming familiar with it, what does it do, how does it work? We're making mistakes, we're going back, we're correcting them, in terms of what we're doing, how we're doing it. Where do I save my documents? And that, what I mean by that is, did I save my document right? I can't find it, where is it? And so we're learning those bits and pieces. There's new functionalities gonna be added, it's Microsoft Classrooms, where teachers can now build an environment where they can post and share, and kids can go in and grab their papers, their assignments, teachers can grade them, send them back, kids can drop them into a Dropbox, not the program, but a Dropbox that's built into Microsoft Classrooms where they can submit assignments. And it's gonna take a while for everybody to get to understand that. It's a very complex program, you really have to work your way through it. So we're looking at this first year as kind of getting out all the kinks, you know, the bugs, figuring it out, and how are we using it, and how is it gonna build into our daily workflows? So this year's a basic year to experiment, if you will. But I see that it's, it is popular, it is powerful, popular, and it really, once you get your head around it, it is, it is fantastic program. Any questions or anything?
Barb?
Ed, thank you, thank you very much, and from somebody who's challenged, I'll be calling. But I do have a question, if there's more than one student in a family...
Yes.
What's the protocol for that?
They now get 10 copies.
Okay.
It's, it's assigned by student, each student will be assigned an email, which is like their login, and each one of those are unique.
Got it.
So it's each student is being assigned those five copies for PC and five copies.
Okay, thank you.
Mark?
First I want to say this is great, because this is a skill set that is very, very important in the business environment, and having students learn this now will give them a great start. And as, you know, not to say any, but there's a lot of people who don't have the aptitude and the skill to use these tools, and it makes a big difference in how well they work in the business environment.
I agree.
So, and, you know, with that, and I know you just said that this is a pilot, you're really getting a feel for it, what do you have in place for student help, student education guides on how to use this?
I can address that if you'd like. Right now, I mean, you know, we're in the phase of training our teachers to use the programs, and then, like most programs, what we'll do is we will train the teachers, and it will be part of the instructional program for the teachers to train the students in use. You know, we don't typically hold professional development for the students except for what they learn within the classrooms. So as our teachers become acclimated and increase their capacity to use these collaborative tools, that, that's how it gets passed on to the students. And as Ed mentioned, it's voluntary, you know, we don't require online instruction or the use of the online collaboration for, for teachers and students, it's a tool, it's a resource that's available to them. We do know that we have had teachers who have used tools like Dropbox, tools like Google, what we're saying is that we feel more comfortable in this environment, because it's under our control, and we feel the data is safe, and so if you're doing those sort of things, we want you to migrate to this platform, we'll provide the professional development to support you in that, and then the teachers will then turnkey those, those skills to the students that they want to use it with.
Yeah, and absolutely, this is the right, great way to do it. Along those lines, and this may be now or maybe over the course of the year, have you looked at the need to change or update any policies or rules of use when it comes to using these with the students?
Cool. I'll take that. Our policy committee is looking at a cloud-based policy that Ed and Jim worked on, and it's on our committee to come back to the next meeting, we just had some questions about it. So absolutely, there'll be a policy in front of you pretty soon to take a look at, at making sure that we're, our board policies cover everything that we're doing.
Good, well, good, thank you.
Yep.
Carol?
To piggyback on Mark's question a little bit, so you're saying it's voluntary, I'm looking at Ed and Jim.
Right, we don't require that teachers use cloud-based software with students, you know, then we would have to then, the PD lift, the effort for that would be enormous. We would have to then roll out and train every single teacher immediately if we were to require its use. And it's not an instructional practice that's used by all teachers. So for those teachers who do use this form of instruction or are interested in learning about it, we provide the professional development, and it's a voluntary tool. Obviously, Microsoft Outlook is our mandatory email system, we don't have another email system, but in terms of online file storage or using the class notebooks, or when, when the Microsoft classrooms are released, the use of those will be voluntary. But if a teacher is going to use an online platform, this is the one that they will be expected to use, because this is the one that the district will support.
Okay, I always stop a little bit at, when you say this is what they're expected to use, and I understand that we cannot make people use something.
Right.
My concern would be, you know, for example, when we launched our website, and we said every teacher has a webpage, well, a lot of them just have a calendar on the webpage. So how are we gonna make sure that this becomes worth it financially for us, enough people using it that actually the district is getting benefit from it, if it's really voluntary?
Well, I think, I mean, we're already seeing the benefits of it from an administrative team, for, just for us, for example, Elementary Cabinet, the meeting with all the principals and directors, Secondary Cabinet, all the principals and directors, ILT, which is the K-12 principals and directors, all of our materials and agenda items, everything is stored in the cloud, and we're using it to organize and disseminate things that way. Many administrators and teacher leaders are using it within their departments to, in a similar manner, to disseminate materials and make the agendas a more collaborative document. So instead of me as the person who facilitates Elementary Cabinet, or a department leader who facilitates their department meeting determining the agenda, they post basically a blank agenda with maybe a few items, and all the members of that group get to add to it collaboratively, and then also put their own notes in based on the conversations. So even just from an organizational standpoint, that hasn't even reached the students particularly yet, we're seeing a huge increase in collaboration and efficiency in terms of the way in which we're doing business with that tool. And again, student use, we'll have to monitor that and see. I expect that it grows as we get more digital natives as our teachers, more and more of them are looking to these digital tools as a means of disseminating student work and then gathering the work that the students are doing back, and what we want to make sure is that's in the safest and most secure environment possible. You know, many of us are Google users in our personal lives, but we, you know, after going around and conversations with the Board and the community, we felt Microsoft was the more secure and acceptable environment for that for our students, and that's why we've gone in this direction.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Catherine?
So, I can see this application for the high school, that makes a lot of sense for me, but you're still gonna be targeting down to 4th grade up to 12th, right? But at this point, is that what goes on in a 4th grade classroom? It, okay, huh? Okay.
Many, second, third grade, 4th grade classrooms creating PowerPoints, you know, practicing their keyboarding skills in terms of writing their research reports, writing stories, poetry.
Yeah.
And as I'd said, many times they're either working to do that at home and having to print them out, or the flash drive, which is, you know, that, they are so susceptible, as I'd mentioned, to viruses and cryptoware and other problems, they're not as reliable in terms of being able to use an existing login, won't be new information for the students to be able to access this information, they can do it from home or on any device, and then come back to school, log into the same account, print it there, or submit it potentially electronically once we're ready to move forward with that.
Well, I do recall with my own kids, learning the keyboard at that age and all that, but having curriculum being presented to them in that manner, I just, it's been a while. The other thing is, you have that disdain for the flash drive, but I always thought that that was like a, you know, an insurance policy, if a system were to crash, you would have your information on your flash drive. So, you know, you say this is better, and I'm sure it is better, but what do you do in that worst-case scenario if you don't have, I mean, how is it backed up if it's not someplace else?
Microsoft replicates these across multiple data centers around the country, so they have them in, they, they break it all up, and they share it across data centers in the West Coast, East Coast, so it's in multiple redundant centers, so that if there is a failure in one, and they've, you know, we don't know when they happen, but they, I sometimes will get a notice we're replicating our environment. So if they do run into a failure, they just bring another backup online from another, another instance that's running, probably running, and they don't share a lot, which I don't really blame them. But we do see a fairly significant rate of flash drive failures, flash drive and hard drive, external hard drive failures. And they do break, and they get lost, and...
Yeah.
But yeah, I know, I like my flash drive, I mean, that's where I, you know, that was my big technology, was flash drives, but...
Yes, we're moving forward, aren't we?
I think too, I mean, in the event, obviously if there's a wide-scale failure, and there's a network outage, and all students are not gonna be able to access things, right? The teachers are gonna have to make adjustments in a situation like that, just like... The teachers are going to have to make adjustments in a situation like that, just like we do as administrators. I know personally, if I'm, if I'm doing a presentation, I will typically save that presentation to my desktop so that I'm not necessarily reliant on going up to the web to get it and having to come back down, just in case at that event. This way, all I have to do is power up my computer, and it's all right there. It's not trying to get it from someplace that would require network access to retrieve that particular document at that time. So, and then those are the things we need to teach our students, right? About, about living in that world and having to move between the digital and the present in order to have those fail safes in place.
Yeah. A lot of businesses don't allow flash drives. They disable the ports on their laptops, so.
I know. I realize we are moving beyond what was.
Beyond the walls.
And could I ask one more question?
Yes.
As far as security goes.
Yes.
I think what you're trying to say is it's as, about as secure as can be, right? But we're still living in the world where there's always somebody smarter and better who can figure it all out. But I, I just wanted to reiterate that we're, this is probably like, you know, the top of how secure it can be? Or is it anybody's guess?
In my opinion.
Okay. In your opinion?
In my opinion, I'm the most comfortable with what Microsoft has to offer. They're a large corporation. They have a lot riding on this. They can't afford. Having said that, it's, it's a different place out there. And that's the one thing that keeps myself and my team up at night. All it takes is one flash, wrong flash drive, one wrong click on a website, and we're, here we go.
But that is the nature of computers.
It is where we're at today.
Yes, right, right.
So, I feel that there, I'm very, my opinion is I'm comfortable with what Microsoft has done, what they say they do.
I just think it's important to say that though.
Absolutely.
And to just, you know, have it out there. Because the best we can do is the best we can do.
Right.
And we need to acknowledge that.
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Will everybody have a Penfield.edu email then?
Yes.
Oh, great.
All students will.
Okay, great. Any other questions for Ed? Well, this is great. I think if just one person benefits and learns the skills, it's well worth the investment. And I know we'll have probably 5,000 kids to start with that'll do that. So, thanks again, Ed. And we look forward to hearing more back on the progress, you know, this year.
We'll certainly do. Thank you for your time, and I sincerely appreciate your continued interest in what we do and your support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ed. We have a Facilities Committee update. Just, just briefly, there's a District Board Committee, the Facilities Committee. We meet on a regular basis. There are a number of people on there. The architects we use, Mark Elidge and Catherine Dean are the board member reps on that committee. Myself, Dr. Sansucci. And the purpose of the Facilities Committee is an ongoing committee to really review our facilities, to do our, you'll, you'll hear when we have our architects and, and management companies come in here, like Mr. Huffman and Alan McNiff, of all the work that we're continuing to do every summer and all, all year long. I'll turn it over to Dr. Sansucci because last night, we really started looking at sort of the next, the next project in Penfield. And we don't have anything detailed to talk about yet. But we wanted to make sure that we spoke to the board, and then we'll have something more next board meeting. But I'll turn over to Dr. Sansucci.
Thank you. As you know, the, you know, the, you've heard numerous reports from, from me on behalf of the Facilities Committee as we moved through last year, as we worked on the building condition survey. That committee guided us through a couple of smaller capital projects as we, as we worked, and a few emergency projects, as we worked our way through the process. But we, we left the, the Building Condition Survey process with a list of things to do, and a list of work that we wanted to have done and some needs. And, and as we moved into the summer, really, a lot of those decisions and the momentum of that committee and the momentum of the district around our facilities sort of cooled a little bit, I guess, while we waited and, and learned about some, the, what was going to happen in the community with regards to development. You know, obviously of the Shadow Pines property. And, and you're all well aware of what the Moratorium Committee, the Moratorium remains in place and what's happened with that. So, we, we, the committee, certainly the board, all of us, were very interested in, in what that process looked like. But, but, and at this point, while no final decisions have made, been made by, by the town, it does appear like we are in a place where we can at least begin our planning process again. And, and there, there's a need for that. So, there's a, there is some urgency around capital project planning. And that urgency, again, it has to do with time. So, from, from the time that, if we're, if, if we're to do new additions around our capacity needs, from the time we have a positive vote, there's about three years between when the vote is and when a classroom is ready for children to attend. That's a really long period of time. So, it makes long-term planning and thinking ahead and, and making decisions relatively crucial. So, we've been on pause. We were on pause all summer. But at the committee meeting last night, we reviewed where we're at. We reviewed what we think we know about our future. And we made some determinations that it was time to begin planning, to sort of rev up that engine again and, and begin to move. And there's really five key variables that are going to drive decisions as we move forward. So, these are very early conversations. This is just a, this is a, we really decided that today, tonight, we would do a verbal update to the board just so you would know what you're going to be seeing in the future. Because we're going to be talking about all of these components really a lot as we move forward. Some of them, we've already been talking about. So, the, the elementary school capacity issue. As you know, our elementary schools have been slowly but steadily growing in student population. When we switched to full-day K from half-day K, we used up a lot of our extra space. And we're kind of at the verge now of, of capacity issues. We've begun to convert instructional space from one purpose to another. So, we're, we've converted, for example, at Cobble's, a computer room into a classroom. That's going to continue. That process is going to continue into the near future until we do something about it. So, class size will continue to grow. We know that. So, we need to, to begin to develop a plan to address that. The Facilities Committee and the, and the boards talked about a variety of approaches to, to take to address that. Additions, if we do additions, how large, at what building? Those decisions need to be made, and we need to begin moving forward. So, the committee committed last night to some work and study and movement around, around additions. That's a piece of, that, that's a piece of urgency. We need to move forward because the kids are going to come whether we're ready for them or not. So, we need to, we need to begin to build that capacity. The other piece of urgency has to do with the bond refinancing that the board approved several meetings ago. That's a good thing. It's going to save us money. And as you recall, in about three years, it really kicks in in about three years, the district's local share, or the amount of money that we support, will drop by about a half million dollars. We'll have a half million dollars extra, which is, doesn't sound that urgent, does it? It sounds like a good thing. Except that it's a, it's a gift with a lifespan. And, and if that money, which is now tied up in supporting our, our capital construction and supporting our plant, if we don't have some other piece of plant support to, to put in against it, it'll go through our budget, it'll support our general fund budget. And when it goes away, the things that we support with it won't, and we'll have created a budget crisis for ourselves. So, in terms of long-range planning, we don't want to do that. So, enrollment, enrollment increases at the elementary, long-range planning. And a piece you don't know a lot about, but you will because I'll be talking to you about it in the near future, and it needs to be part of our planning as well. And that has to do with capacity and space limitations at BOSI's. We're a component of BOSI's. BOSI's is us, right? The, all Monroe County districts participate in either BOSI's one or BOSI's two. And we do that to share, to share resources. And BOSI's does a lot for us. You'll hear an annual report on that. But one of the things they do for us is provision of program to students with special needs. So, kids whose needs can't be met in the home district are, are often met at BOSI's. They have the capacity, the specialized programming, the expertise to be able to do that. What's been happening in the community over time, over the last several years, the last many years, is the, is the state reimbursement rates for private providers in the community, so the Mary Carriolas of the world and so forth, haven't really kept pace with costs. And those programs have been slowly downsizing, slowly closing. That capacity, the private capacities eroded. And the children are still there. So, as those programs have shrunk, those students have ended up in BOSI's programs. That's fine. They're fine programs. But BOSI's space is limited. And what's happened through, they, they have space, as you know, that they lease from, from East Rochester at TLR Morgan and Lois E. Byrd. Those buildings are pretty full. They have, they have space at the Foreman Center at the, on, at the main BOSI's campus. That building is full. And they have traditionally leased space from school districts, school districts like us. We used to lease them two classrooms. As our space needs got tighter, we took those classrooms back. So, at this point, at BOSI's for our special, our students with special needs, there's no room left at the end. There is currently a waiting list at BOSI's of, I believe the superintendent's shared that it's 100 students deep at this point. So, those are our kids with no place to go. BOSI's is interested in, would be interested in any school, in having a conversation with any school district that is contemplating a building project. And the way that works is if we were to do an addition to our building that was essentially more space than, than we needed for our kids, we're building space for BOSI's. BOSI's will lease those classrooms from us. That helps with their need, and the lease payments offset our debt service costs. So, there's no impact to our taxpayers. We can provide the space that BOSI's needs. And then, after the lease is over, once the debt is paid, they're still our classrooms. So, it provides us some capacity at some future point. So, that's not a decision or a recommendation because you make the decision, and we're not ready for a recommendation yet. But it's something that we need to attend to. I think we should stir that into these conversations. So, that's three of the five things. We've got the, the debt coming, the, the debt coming off. We have our, our elementary enrollment needs. We have our needs for, at BOSI's for special education students. We have the Building Condition Survey that the, that the, that the board just adopted at the tail end of last year. We just finished that process. That's a process where we look at all the needs in all of our buildings. And if you'll recall, that totaled about $127 million. We wouldn't be bringing you all 127, but clearly, we know there's needs. You know, the, as you've toured the buildings, you've seen some of those. Heating and ventilating at Indian Landing Springs to mind, aging electrical panels, roofs. It's the boring stuff that we have to attend to. So, we need, we need to take care of that. And then finally, the, the thing on that Building Condition Survey that has, that has vexed us for a very long time is, is the bus garage and the maintenance facility on Five Mile Line Road. Last night, the, we've, we've talked about probably 300 different possibilities for that. And last night, the committee, after a lot of discussion, elected, decided that we should certainly revisit that and look at, and, and an option that we looked at once long ago, which is the, the property that we own on Atlantic Avenue. If you'll recall, that was part of the original bond issue that failed when we, when we, when we first designed what turned into our last big capital project. But there's, and we'll have more, lots more conversation about that. There was, I think now, lots of miscommunication around what our intent was with that. I think the public believed, I, I now believe that what we told the public accidentally was that we were moving the bus garage there. That wasn't true then. It's not what our intent is now. What we really need is just a space for Alan McNiff, for the buildings and grounds folks. Because if we could move those folks out of the, the space on Five Mile Line Road, we can create, we believe we can create enough space there for the buses. The buses don't have to move, that we could be okay into the foreseeable future in terms of capacity. Because as those student capacities grow at all our schools, the need for buses is going to grow. The need for drivers is going to grow. And we're all ready out of space at that. So, those are five things, five significant initiatives. And the committee committed last night to begin planning around those. We set a tentative target date for a, for a vote a year and a half into the future. So, not, not, not this Christmas, not, not with this vote, but at the earliest mid-year of next year. There's much that we would like to be able to do sooner, but there's a lot of planning that has to go on into that, a lot of decisions that have to be made that aren't yet made. And we also need at least that amount of time to communicate with our public, to tell them what we're thinking about, to struggle with it in public so they can see what we're, what we're doing and trying to do. And that doesn't come quickly. We need to do that now. So, that's what this update's really all about. It's all about foreshadowing that process. The committee decided last night to begin. That's not a decision other than to begin. We made that, we're resolute. And so, we're going to be bringing to you lots of initial planning pieces and presentations as we move along. So, as we do, we'll talk a lot about it at board meetings because that's one of the ways we keep our public, public informed. And this is the first of those. So, are there any questions? Is there anything I, I touched on? Committee members that are here, did I say something wrong?
Catherine and Mark, do, as members of the community, do you have anything to add?
I was going to say, as Mark said, with exception of BOSI's. These are things we've talked about over, over a number of years, more than once. You know, the building grounds, the bus garage was on not this, just this BCS, but the previous BCS. And it's a, you know, it always gets pushed off. And we've talked about capacity. So, none of this is really new, with the exception of BOSI's. But it is, it is time. You know, we, we, things can only go so fast. We've had to hold off. And, and again, there's a lot of thought and work that goes on in the background that even the board members, we don't see, that we know that Mark and, and his team does. So, this is not a harsh, a rushed decision. It is really well thought out with that long-term planning.
Okay. Catherine, anything?
The planning that you referred to, you know, there are so many decisions and whatnot that need to be made. When Gary said, you know, I might just as well take this plan and throw it out the window, there is a long list of timelines and whatnot that was projected in the first place that we, you know, we can't, we're foreseeing that it's just going to take so much longer. So, we have to take our time. And, and like Mark said, you know, there has been a lot of discussion about this. I do have a question about the BOSI's piece about it though. But, you know, if you want to go to the others first.
Does anybody else have a question before we? Okay. All right. Go ahead, Catherine.
In your discussions with BOSI's, Mark, have, have they been able to explain that the need for these extra classrooms? Is it because there's more students with needs or more districts are reclaiming their space?
It's, it's, it's a, it's a combination of multiple things. I'm not certain that there are more students with needs in the community. I don't, I don't know that to be true. I don't believe it to be true. But there's a lack of capacity in the community that's not school, that's not us, essentially. So, you know, the, the private providers have been slowly getting out of that. They've been not, not by choice, but the reimbursements and the, and just, oops, sorry. I think I just did that. The reimbursements have, have slowly driven them from the business. So, that's left BOSI's as that sort of provider of last resort.
Okay.
And, and so, there, there is that need. I'm, BOSI's, I annually provides a, an update on enrollment and what their enrollment looks like in terms of student need and their capacity to their board. I hope to get some of that information, and it's being done right about now. You know, we, we missed this meeting, but I think we would have it and be able to get it for the next meeting. So, it's the newest piece of this. So, I want to sort of lead with that a little bit and start having those conversations so that we're all aware of what's going on. start having those conversations, so that we're all aware of what's going on. Because, you know, it's, it's, Penfield's a part, it's not a, it's, it's Bosie's, it's not a foreign, it's not someone else, it's us. I mean, we're a part of that. Our kids attend those programs. And, and our public, a portion of our public depends on those. So, you know, we need to address that.
Yeah.
Barb?
I, I know that one of the reasons is that even though we are part of Monroe 1, which is the 10-component districts on the east side, I know that Bosie's, because of the unique programs that they do offer center-based, they are drawing students from all over the whole region, as well as Bosie's 2.
That's correct, yes.
So I think that that's part of, and, and I do know that for a fact, that, I believe that Superintendent White is, is sad that he can't always provide for the 10-component districts. But I'm just wondering if what you just related about them talking about this on their board, would this be something that our board member would be able to report back to us in a timely fashion?
Mr. Shippey?
Mm-hmm.
Sure. I, I'd expect you'd be able to. I, I also intend to get my hands on their presentation, so it's, I, I am on the Management Steering Committee for the, for the Bosie's. It's a piece of administration at Bosie's that sort of guides their, their budgeting mostly, their decision-making. And we get a preview of that, of that presentation. I haven't seen it yet, but, so that tells me that it's upcoming, but I'd expect it any time.
Okay.
Okay. And talking to a couple of Bosie's one board members, correct me if I'm wrong, Mark, but it's literally really impossible for them to go out and build something as a Bosie's.
Correct. They, they can, but there are hurdles. I mean, there's lots of, because there's so many moving parts, you know, their approvals come from all of us, really they're, and, and, you know, the other part of that is it really is, in terms of the federal law and the way special education is intended to be provided, better provided at local districts. You know, Bosie's has been, the state and the federal government have been critical in the past of, of Bosie's for providing so much of their service in those two campuses at East Rochester, because they're segregated, it's separate. And that's not the intention of, of integrated special education. So the more that they can provide it in local districts, the happier they are.
Yeah. Thank you. And, you know, we don't need to talk about this now, but we probably haven't toured Bosie's in probably two or three years as a group, which they always invited us to do. But also, I know at the Byrd School where Barb worked and others worked there, I mean, it is just like completely crowded.
It is. If it's been some, it has been some time for us. And as the Management Steering Committee, we toured it several years ago, and then toured it again more recently. And it's amazing what they've done with it. They have done a great job with that space. It is, it's, it's nice space. There's just not enough of it.
Okay. Well, we'll look forward to a lot of updates, and Catherine and Mark, and Mark, so appreciate that. Okay. Is that it on your report?
That concludes the superintendent reports.
Thank you. We're on page three of our agenda, Board Business Facilities. We had a number of changes that were put in there. The change has obviously been reviewed and supported by our architect, project manager Gary Huffman, clerk of the works Alan McNiff, and our assistant superintendent Mark Sansoussi. If I could have a motion a second, that the change orders, as described in your packet, be approved. Any discussion or comment? All those in favor? Thank you. Under our financial items, this is in regard to an agreement with the Penfield Paraprofessional Association. I have a resolution that the board approves the agreement between the Penfield Paraprofessional Association, also known as PPA, and the Penfield Central School District, effective July 2016 through June 30th, 2019. If I could have a motion a second to that effect.
Second.
We have a motion by Carol, a second by Barb. Any questions? I know we've been briefed on this, and it's going back to July 1, obviously retroactive. So any other questions? All those in favor? Thank you. We also have an agreement with the Penfield Association of Educational Office Professionals. And a resolution, the board approves the agreement between the Penfield Association of Educational Office Professionals, PAEOP, and the Penfield Central School District, effective July 2016 through June 30th, 2019. If I could have a motion a second? All those in favor of the motion? Thank you. Policy review. Whose turn is it to take this from the policy committee?
It's my turn, but I'll go.
Everyone was looking at you.
I saw that. I anticipated that. That's fine. So we looked at, we had our first policy committee meeting, and we looked at four policies, and we did send two right away for a first read. And we already have some comments. The first policy has to do with video cameras on school grounds. We used to only have a policy on video cameras on the school buses. So this is a case where our policy is now catching up with, with what has been the practice in our buildings. We have surveillance cameras and equipment in places other than school buses. So we have a short policy that talks about our intent to have some surveillance, and then we have a lot of regulations backing up the policy. The first one has to do with regulations of the video equipment on the buses, and the second regulation has to do with video equipment in the buildings. So this is up for a first read, and we look forward to any comments from board members, community members. Any policies that are up for review are on our website. I don't know if this one is already there. And we'll go for a second read at our next meeting, or as many reads as we want, until we're sure that we have the language right. The other policy, does anyone have any questions about that one now or comments?
Any questions?
Just Camille, I got the nod from Nancy Bradstreet, so these are up on our webpage. So if anybody's watching, they can.
Of course they are. She's always on top of that. The second policy is one that's being substantially revised. We subscribe, every year we pay a fee to Erie 1 Bosie's for quarterly policy updates. So this is an update recommended by Erie 1 Bosie's. There's a lot of language. We're adopting all the new language, and then we added a few pieces that are unique to Penfield. So there's some language that we had in our pre-existing policy, or that people in the district office felt was still necessary. There is, whenever we see a five-page policy, we wonder if maybe some of it couldn't be in regulation, and we will look into that. The advantage of having some of it in regulation would be, we're much more flexible then. If there's a change in how we're delivering the service, then regulations can be changed by administrators without getting board approval and going through that whole first read, second read process. So we'll look at that one, but just for your information, is one that's required by New York State law. So we, there's a list of, I don't know, 20 to 50 policies that are required for a board to have, and recommended by Erie 1 Bosie's. So that's why this was being looked at again, even though we looked at it pretty recently. I think 2013, we changed it. So those are the first two, and we look forward to bringing you some more at the next meeting, including a new policy on cloud computing. And we're way ahead of the curve on this. There are not a lot of districts that have policies on cloud computing, so kudos to Ed Turkowski and the district office team for being ahead of that.
Great. Any questions? Thanks to the committee for looking at that. I know you need to adapt some practical effects sometimes when you look at the policies or regulations, so that's great. And I'm not sure if we'll ever get a tour of the cloud.
I'll work on that.
But wouldn't that be something? Yeah. We could be the first one to do that. Yeah. We need the goggles. Okay. Back to the non-cloud activities here. Thank you, Camille. Under president's remarks, I just noted that we have the New York State School Boards Association Convention. And I know sometime soon Barb, as our delegate, will be going to the delegate meeting in Canadagua.
Yes. Saturday morning, October 1st.
Okay. Great.
We're all firmed.
Great. And as we all know, we get that packet, and we try and look at that, and Barb will give us a report of what the consensus was from the group, and we certainly need to look at these individually ourselves, too. In conjunction, you know, and then we'll be at the convention, and if it's the board's pleasure, last year we did have a workshop a couple of weeks after, prior to our board meeting, to debrief on the convention programs, as we all cannot go to everything. But I think we did a good job letting everybody know what you were going to. And I wanted to know if November 15th, if that's a board meeting date, if that would be a good date for us to debrief on our convention activities, programs, et cetera. Does that work for everybody? Okay. And we'll try and have some, some snacks or real food for the group, so, okay, we'll do that. Okay, Dr. Putnam?
Okay.
Also, I didn't have this on the agenda, but I, and I'm sure you got this letter, too, from town supervisor Tony LaFontaine, thanking myself individually, and I'm sure Dr. Putnam got the letter, too, for our participation in the moratorium committee, and how they appreciate the school district as a resource and being involved in that. So I thought that was nice of him to send a letter. And I know our input, particularly Dr. Putnam's and Dr. Sansoussi's input, even though he wasn't on there, will be crucial in, in what they come out with as far as their plan. I haven't heard anything from the town, but we'll be watching to see what happens there. And as this relates to our, our school facilities talk, the growth is inevitable. I mean, you know, we see it, and even if it's not Shadow Pines, it will be somewhere, because we're attracting this. Our community attracts it, and the school attracts it. And school directly provides for the equity in everyone's home. So there's a direct correlation that a lot of communities can't have, so we have that. So it's going to happen. Under unfinished business, we have an updated strategic plan, and we updated that. I know Catherine, you gave everybody a report. Does anyone else have anything to report on any of the activities? Yes.
Our policy committee members, Catherine, Carol, and I, are willing to work on the handbook this year, the revision of the handbook, but we don't want to hog all the fun. So we invite any board members who might want to work on that committee to join us. If you do join us, though, suddenly we're over, if we have more than four people, we'd be over quorum, so really three people is best. Sharon kindly copied the existing handbook, and it's in your folder right now. So at least you can look at what the handbook even is, if you didn't review it at the start of this academic year. So is anybody else interested in looking at the handbook and providing necessary revisions?
Just for clarity, it's the Board of Education handbook.
What did I call it?
Just the handbook. So we also have, in case there are staff watching, there's a staff handbook, but this is for, just for Board of Education members.
Relieved I didn't call it something really odd.
Well, I'll be glad to read it and give some input, but I did find out for the group, I know Brighton has something that's very extensive. I mean, it's probably like 100 pages, but I looked through that, and it had some things that I think we could add to ours. And I think Pittsburgh also had something. Those are the two websites I went to, and it may be worth looking at. They're almost overly oversized. So I hope we can keep our focus, but I think it's great that we want to look at this, and this is why we had it on the plan, so.
And Lisa reminded me that some of us attended a webinar provided by NISBA last year about onboarding, the process of formalizing how we bring new board members aboard. And so that was sort of what got us thinking, that, you know, we could put that into the handbook and generally revise it. So it would be the same group working on that, probably.
And the NISBA now has that up there. I mean, it's, I think there's a document somewhere they posted in relation to that, which I'm pretty sure it's up there. I, I saw that as well. So that's great.
Yeah. Maybe that piqued the interest of other board members, and now they do want to be involved.
Yes. Well, I would encourage everybody to at least read it, be aware of it, and provide comments. And if you get there, and you have to stand out in the hallway, so there's not four of us in there, you can do that as well, or inter-comment from the superintendent's office. So thank you for looking at that, because it is important. As usual, we'll be bringing the strategic plan once a month to the board, so not the next meeting, but the meeting after, and then we'll go every other meeting, if you wanted to figure it out that way, Sharon. So thank you. Anything else? Any new business for anyone to report? There being no more new business, if I could have a motion to adjourn at 8:06 PM. All those in favor? Thank you.